Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council meeting. It is Monday, April 7th, 2014. It's a little bit after 6:30. We have all members of council present. For our Pledge of Allegiance tonight, we have Troop 608. Guys, why don't you come on up and you can lead us in the pledge. Can you make sure that their microphone's working?
Testing.
Okay, who didn't turn off their cell phone? Alrighty, guys, the floor is all yours. Flag is right here behind you.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Guys, why don't you come on up to the podium and introduce yourselves? Tell us what school you go to and why you're here tonight.
Test, 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 test. Sounds like it's working. I still have much.
Go ahead, you can go first, you're there.
I'm Dylan Busco and I'm from Lawton Elementary.
Alrighty, welcome.
I'm Andrew Alonso and I go to Lawton Elementary.
I am Alec Alonso and go to Sanford Middle School.
I'm Logan Gillum and I'm from Jackson Heights Middle School.
I am Alex Vaughn and I go to Sanford Middle.
I'm Kevin Misselli and I go to Jackson Heights Middle School.
Well, welcome, guys, and thank you for coming down. Drew, can I have that microphone? Give them a round of applause. There we go, that'll be better. One, two. Yeah, mine's getting there. Alrighty, we're gonna move on to our invocation. Chief White, would you mind? Test, 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 test.
I'll just hold it. I'll sit back to you. Thank you, welcome council and all our guests tonight. If you would like to join me in prayer, please do so at this time. Father God, we thank you for the opportunity tonight to recognize some of our hometown success stories, our cheerleaders. We thank you for the blessings and the protection that you afforded them during their trips and competitions. We ask for continued good health and safety for them in their endeavors. Lord, we pray for Elena, who was in a very serious car accident this past week, and her family as well. That you continue to heal her and comfort the family during this difficult time. And Father God, we pray on behalf of David Cornwright and his family, and the loss that they have incurred. And Lord, that you would comfort them and give them great healing as well during this difficult time. We pray this in your name, amen.
Thank you, Chief. Our first ceremonial item is from Chief Trednell, where are you? And it is the Shop with the Cop program. Chief, why don't you come on up? Counsel, why don't we go down and join you?
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I would like to introduce Officer Mike Hill, who runs our Shop with the Cop program. So, I am gonna turn the mic over to Michael.
Good evening. Thanks for coming out. We are just gonna introduce a couple of our key sponsors for the Shop with the Cop program. Last, this is the second year, we just did our second annual Shop with the Cop. The first year, we took 20 kids shopping for Christmas. This year, we were able to take 28 kids shopping for Christmas. We raised over $7,500 and got to take 28 families out and have them have an easier time during the Christmas with the economy. I wanna introduce Beth Jenkins, she's a store manager for Walmart. She gave us $2,000 to come shopping at her Walmart down in Sanford, where 28 kids were running around along with 15 or so officers. Needless to say, there wasn't any shoplifting inside of her store that day. So, also with her giving us $2,000, she gave us a 32-inch TV, a Keurig, and a Nutra Bullet to auction off to raise additional money. So, please give her a hand. She's also got Sue Ann with her. She helped out with the planning and all that other good stuff with the bringing them in. Okay, also, we have Omar Rodriguez is here also. The first year I went to Omar, he's helped us out many times with some of our sponsor, like our Cops for Kids House program. He comes out, gives us money to sponsor teams to play in Kickball. He does that. The first year I went to him, he gave me $1,500 to promote the first Shop with the Cop. And then this year, this past year, he gave me $2,500 to take kids shopping. So, without his support and best support, the program would just be, it would be tough to find money. So, I appreciate both you guys out here. Omar, you wanna come up? And I'm sorry, Omar is the general manager for Carl Black of Orlando.
The one thing about the Shop with the Cop program is that when we take the kids shopping, they're not shopping for themselves. They're shopping for their siblings, their parents, their guardians, their grandparents. They get some stuff at the end thanks to the generous donations, but the key is, they are learning how to give, not just receive. That's one of the keys of the program. Michael, thank you very much for the job that you've done. For the last six years, we have done a, some type of sporting event to raise money for Kids House. If you're not familiar with Kids House, it's the Child Advocacy Center here in Seminole County, where everybody in Seminole brings their children who have been abused either emotionally, physically, or sexually. And they do the physical exams, they do the forensic interviews. It's an outstanding organization. They help law enforcement immensely. So, we started six years ago having a flag football game with Winter Springs. At the end of the fourth game, it was 2-2, and we figured, well, how can we get more people involved? Because we were raising about somewhere between $6,000 and $8,000 for Kids House. So, how can we get more people involved? Then, Michael came up with Kickball. And I gotta say, when I first heard that, I said, "Excuse me? I haven't played that since fifth grade." However, we got a football, a kickball tournament together. Last year, we had eight teams, raised about $10,000 for Kids House. This year, we had 16 teams. We were victorious as the kickball champions. The first year, we repeated this year. And this year, we raised over $16,500 for Kids House. That one's hard to keep. There's a larger trophy that is on display at Gators Dockside over on Redbug. They're one of our main sponsors. Great time, we will put it out next year. It's a great thing to come and watch, grown men running around kicking a ball and just having a great time.
So, Chief, just to be clear, we eat Winter Springs, right?
Yes, we did.
Good, okay. It is officially Oviedo Springs for the next year. Alrighty, our next item on the agenda is recognition of some young ladies from both high schools that have just had phenomenal runs. And we're gonna start with Oviedo High School Cheerleaders. Give them a round. The Oviedo High School Varsity Cheerleaders are the state champions. So, again, give them a round of applause. They competed in the 2014 FHSAA Competitive Cheerleading State Champion semifinal, Class 2A Small Division. The event was held at the Silver Springs Arena in Kissimmee, Florida, on January 31st, 2014. The Oviedo High School Varsity Cheerleaders outscored 13 other teams and advanced as one of the top three teams going to the finals. Oviedo High School was victorious over Dr. Phillips High in the 2014 FHSAA Competitive Cheerleading State Championship, placing first in the 2A Small Division Varsity Finals. Their score was the highest team score of any of the classifications this year. Round of applause for them. And to introduce all of the girls, I'm gonna bring in their coach, Shannon Woodward. Shannon, why don't you come on in? Great job.
I don't mess up their name.
Pressure's on me, y'all.
Alright, I started with my seniors, this is Allison Powers, Caitlin Ridenbaugh, Berkeley Moller, Polly Walter, Amber Greer, Katie McHugh, Shannon Takamaru. And these are my juniors, this is Paris Alvegioni and Mackenzie Acock. And these are my sophomores, this is Reagan Johnson, Delaney McLean, and Natalie Badzinski.
Thank you for... Alrighty, next in the wings, we have recognition of the Hagerty High School Varsity Cheerleaders 2014 Championship Titles. These young ladies took state, national, and the world. Give them a round of applause. The Hagerty High Varsity Cheerleaders competed in the FHSAA State Competition on January 31st, 2014, and placed first in the 2A Large Varsity Division, earning their first state championship. The following weekend, the Hagerty Cheerleaders competed in two events at the National High School Cheerleading Championships. The events were the World School Cheerleading and the National High School Cheerleading Championships. The competition consisted, now this I found very impressive, of over 11,000 cheerleaders, 540 teams, and represented 30 different states. Wow. The Hagerty High School Varsity Cheerleaders placed first in the Large Varsity Division, outscoring 32 teams and earning the 2014 National Champion Title. The Cheerleaders also placed first in the 2014 World Cheerleading Championship, earning their first World Champion Title. That is impressive, give them a round. Girls, are you up for a cheer? Counselwoman was wondering. Let's see how we get you in here. First, we have the principal of the school, we have Dr. Mary Williams. We have the Assistant Athletic Director, Matt Rutledge. And then we have their coach, Kim Hackman. And Kim, I'm gonna turn this over to you so you can introduce your girls.
We have quite a few. Alexis Schmidt, Stephanie Fanning, Haley Parlett, Angelique Pertus, Nicolette England, Lindsay Gross, Marissa Morlock, Lauren Hayden, Lexi George, Bree Perry, Lauren Bates, Lauren Swinford, Haley Como, Morgan Curtis, Angel Pagan, Sarah Antonucci, Sabrina Rodriguez, Idalis Nazario, Jada Brown, and Olivia Albano. Okay, girls, spread out for the Husky Rumble. Due to the tight circumstances, let's just basketball style. Alright, you got it.
Everybody, bravo! Everybody, cheer the Husky Rumble! Everybody, bravo! Everybody, cheer the Husky Rumble! Everybody, bravo! Everybody, cheer the Husky Rumble! Everybody, bravo!
Need a heavy dose of this now, bud.
I just got over my allergies, for God's sakes. That's all I need is to get the flu.
Alrighty, that is the end of our ceremonial items. We're gonna move on to item number four, the approval of the minutes from our March 3rd regular session and March 10th special session. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselwoman Higginson?
I'd like to make a motion to approve both meetings.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Nope, looks good.
Hearing none, call the voter. All in favor of the motion to adopt, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item number five, that is the public comment portion of the meeting. I do have two written requests for items that are on the agenda. So, I'm assuming, gentlemen, you wanna speak at the item? Okay. I will hold those for that. I do not have any public comment requests. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address council at this time? I'm disappointed, gentlemen. Alrighty, going once, going twice, we will close public comment. Move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda are items number six through 21. It's usually not quite as large, but with spring break being in March, we only had one meeting in March, so the consent agenda does tend to fill up a little bit. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselwoman Higginson?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Anything?
Nope.
Who made the second? Was that you, councilwoman? Do you have anything?
Nope.
No? Counselwoman Britton?
Nope, I'm fine.
Deputy Mayor?
All set.
Alrighty. Motion on the table is to adopt the consent agenda, item number six through 21. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along to public hearings, we're up to item number 22, ordinance number 1580. It is a right-of-way vacate. At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Cobb.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, the city council is asked to consider a vacation of city right-of-way located on Allen Avenue from the eastern property line of Lot 11, Woodland Heights subdivision, west to the intersection of State Route 426. The staff has reviewed this and determined that it will not operate to the detriment of the city or the public, provided that the conditions set forth in the ordinance and all portions of the proposed vacated property be retained as a non-exclusive utility easement. The proposed ordinance does contain the language requiring the non-exclusive utility easement over the vacated right-of-way. And it also, for the facilitation and maintenance of existing utilities, such as water and sewer, within the right-of-way, as well as a requirement for the applicant to provide a deed or grant of easement rights to the city. It's recommended that the city council read the ordinance by title only, conduct a public hearing, and adopt ordinance number 1580.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. At this time, Mr. Group, can you read ordinance number 1580 by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, closing, vacating, and abandoning a portion of city right-of-way located on Allen Avenue from the eastern property line of Lot 11, Woodland Heights subdivision, west to the Allen Avenue right-of-way intersection with State Road 426, as depicted more specifically in an exhibit, providing for findings, a savings provision, conflict, severability, non-codification, and an effective date. And that's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group. I see the applicant representative is here. Mr. Ball, do you have anything to add?
We have no comments.
Alrighty, thank you, sir. I have no written request up in this ordinance. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address us? Seeing none, we're gonna close public comments and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Deputy Mayor?
Make a motion to approve ordinance number 1580.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Deputy Mayor, you have the floor?
I'm good, sir.
Counselwoman?
I'm good.
Counselwoman Britton? Counselwoman Higginson?
Very good.
Alrighty, I'm good also. That being said, the motion on the table is to adopt ordinance number 1580 as presented. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Guys, go build, it's a great building over there. I think it's gonna be awesome. For those who may be curious, they own the Amazon Stone Granite, which is over on 426, and they're moving across the street, building a new building, a new yard, and it's really gonna be great, so, you know.
Welcome. Good luck.
Yeah, you're welcome. Alrighty, moving right along, we're up to our first reading of ordinances. The first one is number 23, it is ordinance number 1583, and it is on animal and pest waste. I'm not even gonna go there, we'll let Mr. Cobb take care of this one.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for city council to adopt an ordinance related to the proper collection and disposal of animal and pet waste inside the city. The city is responsible for the protection of water quality, the safety of public health and welfare, and preservation of our surrounding habitats. It's important to address animal pet waste, which, if not properly collected and disposed of, can contribute to the contamination of city surface waters through direct runoff and stormwater discharges. This also, adopting this policy also helps with the city's National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit, which we participate with Seminole County. It addresses the proper collection and disposal of animal waste, and will a long way in demonstrating the city's commitment and effort preserving and protecting the quality of Oviedo's water. It's recommended that city council read the ordinance by title and schedule a public hearing for May the 5th, 2014.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Mr. Group, can you please read ordinance number 1583 by title only?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, relating to animal pet waste, amending Chapter 10, Article 1, and Chapter 2, Article 4, Section 2-89 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Oviedo, providing for enforcement and penalties, providing for duties and violations with regard to animals and properties, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date. And that's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion from council to schedule a public hearing on May 5th, 2014, on ordinance number 1583, here in the Oviedo City Council Chambers, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765, at approximately 6:30 PM.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Any discussion? From the right, from the left? Yes.
Yeah, I have a question. Mr. Cobb, this is probably for the next one, but I just wanted to ask you, if this passes, what's the penalty for violating this? Because I couldn't find it in the ordinance. I know it said it'll go, you know, controlling law and whatever, but how does that work?
In the ordinance, in Section 2... It, in the ordinance, in Section 2 of the ordinance, it states that a violation will be classified as a civil infraction, for which a citation may be issued with a violation classification designated as Class 1, which I believe, if I remember correctly, I think that's a $50 fine.
For the first time, $50.
First time, it's $50 fine.
And is the city code enforcement gonna enforce that?
Actually, since we're making it part of the citation ordinance, code enforcement or police department can do it.
Either or, okay, that's good, thanks.
You would not be subject to the normal $500 a day, $500 per violation, or 60 days in jail. That's specifically excluded.
Okay, cool.
Okay.
Very good.
Yep. Alrighty. So the motion on the table is to schedule the public hearing for May 5, 2014. Are there any other questions? Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can everybody hear this?
Yes.
Alright. Good job. We're getting there. We do apologize, we have a brand-new sound system that was just installed last week, and tonight is the, you're all part of the dry run tonight, so we'll work through it. Hopefully, it'll make it better when you're at home watching our meetings, because I know you all do that, on Channel 199 on cables, and you'll be able to hear it now. That was always a complaint. Alrighty, next item, item number 24, is ordinance number 1585, amending Section 2-77 of the Code of Ordinances. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is really a cleanup ordinance. We noticed in reviewing Section 2-77 that there were some issues that we needed to go in and take care of, and so these are mostly cleanup items. Section 2-77 addresses the city's audit committee. Back in September 5 of 2013, the council adopted ordinance number 1573, and it established the city audit committee, and it also, in doing so, established the membership, the eligibility for it, and so one of the things, we're going through it, we're getting ready to go forward establishing the audit committee, and we noticed some things in the ordinance that were cause for concern. What this does, it amends ordinance 2-77, it amends Section 2-77 of the Code of Ordinances, and whereas right now, it says that the audit committee will consist of five members, the change will state that the audit committee will contain no less than three members. And also, under the eligibility, it will allow for not only the city council, but city residents and city employees to be able to serve on the audit committee. There's also some, another small change is that the composition of the committee shall be generally consistent with the auditor selection guidelines, provided that the appointment of members of the city council shall be final and not subject to review. So, I mean, these are small changes that, in Section C, they're taught, we did some topographical change commissioners to say city council, so it was correct. And these proposed revisions allow city council to have the maximum flexibility in both composition and the membership of the audit committee. It's recommended that you read the ordinance by title only and schedule a public hearing for Monday, April 21, 2014.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Mr. Group, can you please read ordinance number 1585 by title only?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, relating to the city's audit committee, and amending Section 2-77 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Oviedo, providing for a savings provision, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date. And that's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group. I'd like to entertain a motion from council to schedule a public hearing for ordinance number 1585 on Monday, April 21, 2014, here in the Oviedo City Council chambers, Oviedo City Hall, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765, at approximately 6:30 PM. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the right?
No, sir.
Nope?
Good deal.
Good. Alrighty. Everybody's in agreement? Motion on table is to schedule the public hearing. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, last first reading, it is item number 25, ordinance number 1589. It is an amendment to Section 7, uh, no, excuse me. There we go. Amendment to Section 7 of ordinance number 1565, zoning map amendment for the Maitland Fruit Company, Inc., and others, as well as M&amp;I Homes. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 1565 was adopted by council on October 21, 2013, and changed the zoning of the subject property from Seminole County A1 Agriculture and City of Oviedo R1A Single Family Residential to City of Oviedo R1 Single Family Residential. Section 7 of ordinance number 1565 established a deadline of May 31, 2014, for the submission of a preliminary subdivision plan to the city council. If the preliminary subdivision plan was not submitted by that date, then the zoning would be revert to R1A Single Family Residential. The applicant is requesting an extension of the May 31 deadline to May 31, 2015. The basis for the request is that, is the modification of the original preliminary subdivision plan due to the incorporation of additional property through annexation, and also the restructuring of the subdivision with the new applicant. That's one of the things, that we have a new developer on this property. They are looking to bring in additional property to be incorporated into what will become subdivision, and so they are asking for a one-year extension for the submittal of the preliminary subdivision plan. It's recommended that city council read the ordinance by title only and schedule a public hearing for April 21, 2014.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Mr. Group, can you read ordinance number 1589 by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, amending Section 7 of ordinance number 1565, which ordinance amended the official zoning map of the City of Oviedo, Florida, and changed the zoning district of approximately 35.14 acres located on the west and east side of Lee Avenue, approximately 100 feet north of the intersection of Lee Avenue and Allendale Avenue, from Seminole County Agriculture A1 and City of Oviedo Residential R-1A to City of Oviedo Residential R1, amending the contingency set forth in Section 7 by changing the reversion date from May 31, 2014 to May 31, 2015, providing for legislative findings and intent, implementing actions, incorporation of description and map, conflicts, severability, non codification, and ineffective date. And that's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for ordinance number 1589 on April 21, 2014, at approximately 6:30 PM, here in the Oviedo City Council chambers, at Oviedo City Hall, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions?
Nope.
Nope. Mr. Cobb, I have just one. Is the property zoned R1A currently, or R1?
The property is currently zoned R1.
Okay. That's all I need to know. Alrighty, any other questions?
No.
Hearing none, we'll call the vote. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. See everybody in two weeks. Alrighty, now we're going on to resolutions. Item number 26, resolution number 2791-14, Third Amendment to the Non- Statutory Development Agreement for Oviedo on the Park Mixed Use Development, Evans Grove, Inc., continued from March 3, 2014. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for city council to consider the Third Amendment to the Non-Statutory Development Agreement for the Oviedo on the Park Mixed Use Development. As mentioned, on March 3, the city council considered this resolution and the proposed amendment to the development agreement, and decided to continue its consideration to the April 7 meeting, directing staff to meet with the applicant to discuss in more detail the specific uses of each parcel designated as future development on the master land use plan, and to clarify the language of the approval, to the approval process to reflect changes under consideration with the Land Development Code rewrite process. The staff met with the applicant on two different occasions, on March 13 and March 26. We were able to work out most of the items that we were directed to discuss. With pertaining to Lot number 8, we were, the applicant did agree with the city council's suggestion that we revised the permissible uses to, say, single non-residential and mixed use. On your dies tonight is a copy of Exhibit A. Unfortunately, it was left out of your packet, and I do apologize for that oversight, but we do have it there for you, and you will notice that under Lot 8, it does reflect single non-residential and mixed use. If you will remember, the city council's concern was the possibility of having just residential developed on that tract. It's a small tract, and is very at the corner of Metrohammock Road and Oviedo Boulevard, so it's more conducive to non-residential type of development. The applicant was asking for flexibility, so that they've had a number of people come in with single uses, looking at the property, and so they wanted to be able to do a single type of use as well as mixed use, and the council recommended non-residential, and they agreed to it. We were also able to work out some issues with Section 4. We were able to clarify that the development of the future tract properties would be consistent with the Land Development Code and the development agreement, and that there is still the change to remove the reference to increasing the number of lots to the master land use plan. We were not able to reach consensus on the process, as well as identifying specific uses for Lots 9, 10, 11, 12, and 14. However, the agreement is structured such that the applicant will be required to follow the Land Development Code in effect at the time of application, and also be compliant with the development agreement. The staff recommends approval, and it's recommended that city council adopt resolution number 2791-14.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Does the applicant have a presentation? Name and address for the record, please.
David Axel, Axel Real Estate, 1757 West Broadway Street, Oviedo. Thank you, council, for this opportunity tonight. When we were here, March 3, there were a number of concerns, one of which, Mr. Cobb has mentioned, was single residential use on Lot 8, which, quite frankly, we had never considered might occur, but under the language would have been allowed. There was also, unfortunately, some confusion with the language we had in Section 4, which we have amended. It does specifically provide that development will be in accordance with the Land Development Code in effect at the time of the application. If there are any questions or any discussion amongst council that I can help clarify, I stand ready to answer any questions or join you in a discussion. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Axel?
No.
Not yet. I have no request to speak forums on this item, so we'll move over to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2791-14.
Second.
The motion and a second. Councilwoman, you have the floor.
I'm good.
Alrighty. Deputy Mayor?
Just thank you for incorporating those, A, number 3, incorporating that in, and number 4, helping straighten out the language, appreciate it.
Councilman Britton?
No issues.
No. Councilman Higginson?
Good.
Alrighty. Be that as it may, we'll call the vote. Motion on the table is to adopt Resolution 2791-14 as presented. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, item number 27, resolution number 2821-14, that is authorizing the issuance of utility system refunding revenue notes, Series 2014. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for city council to authorize a negotiated loan in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $8,100,000, for the purpose of refunding the Series 2003 Utility Revenue Bonds, the execution and delivery of a loan agreement, the execution and delivery of an escrow deposit agreement, an appointment of an escrow agent, and the execution and delivery of a City of Oviedo, Florida Utility System Refunding Revenue Note Series 2014. At its March 3, 2014, regular meeting, the council awarded RFP number 14-02 for a bank-qualified tax-exempt utility system refunding revenue note, Series 2014, to TD Bank. This is for an 18-year fixed rate of 3.13% and an amount not to exceed $8,100,000. The purpose of the refunding is to take advantage of the interest rate savings and to pass those savings to the users of the city's water and sewer utility system. The utility system will realize approximately $62,057 in annual savings, and cash flow savings of $1,146,399 over the life of the note, representing a present value savings of $859,521. The delivery date of the note is April 9, 2014, and it will mature on October 1, 2032. It is recommended that city council adopt Resolution 2821-14.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Anybody have anything for us to add? If Mr. Cobb didn't already... Jerry, do you have anything?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council, Jerry Boot Finance Director, City of Oviedo. I just wanted to compliment the folks at First Southwest. They really did an outstanding job in negotiating this deal with us, and of course, BM O'Hara, excuse me, BM O'Hara, Bryant Miller &amp; Olive, the great work that they do on our behalf, just outstanding work on everybody's part on this team, and I just want to formally recognize them for the great work that they did.
Great. Any questions?
Uh-uh.
Alrighty. Thank you. What is the pleasure of council on resolution number 2821-14?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I...
Councilwoman?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 2821-14.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, Councilwoman?
I'm good.
You're good?
Good job, Jerry.
Councilman?
Good job.
Councilman Higginson?
Good.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, everybody. Yep.
Well, we're gonna keep refinancing these things, and pretty soon, they're gonna be paying us interest to take them, so. But anyway, great job by everybody, as usual, and I, we're gonna stay and sign, is that what I heard? Alrighty, well, I'll get my hand ready. Alrighty, the motion on the table is to adopt. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alrighty, item number 28, resolution number 2833-14, Memorandum of Understanding relating to New Downtown Village Core and New Downtown Zoning Districts and the Oviedo on the Park Master Plan. Mr. Cobb, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council is asked to approve a memorandum of understanding with the city manager, acting in his capacity as the land use administrator, pertaining to the New Downtown Village Core and the New Downtown Zoning Districts, as well as the Oviedo on the Park Master Plan. The memorandum of understanding delegates certain land use authority back to the city council. City council, when we had our discussion, our work session on the Land Development Code, there was, the city council expressed that you would like to see the land development process be uniform throughout the city, but you also expressed a desire to have city council more involved in the land development process. When you had your meeting on March 3, and you were discussing the Third Amendment, which you just adopted, once and again, you expressed a desire to be more involved in the land development process. On March 4, I went and I spoke with Mr. Group and asked him, how can we facilitate what the council has asked for in two different meetings? Mr. Group brought forward this memorandum of understanding, and Mayor, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Group now, and let him explain to you the different parts of the memorandum.
Certainly. Thank you. Mr. Group?
Well, the memorandum is really very simple, and let me just go back to basics about what is involved here. The city council is the entity under state law that has zoning and planning authority for the City of Oviedo. The statutes even allow the city council to serve as its own local planning agency. The sovereign powers of the city vest in the city council. The city council can delegate powers, and the city charter provides that the council has the authority to approve the organization of city government, and to set all matters relative to policy. In the Land Development Code in Section 2.1, the city council, by enacting that ordinance, said that certain decisions could be made by the land use administrator, who is the city manager serving in that capacity. What this MOU would do is not change any development standards, not change any zoning, not change any requirements or lack of requirements, not change the process, except for who decides whether or not a particular type of development in a particular zoning district, whether it meets the standards of the city code or not. The standards don't change, the code doesn't change, the process would change a bit, in that the decisions would not be made by the land use administrator, but would be made by city council. That's what this MOU would do, if you want to do it.
Anything else, Mr. Group?
No, sir.
Alright. So, Mr. Group, just for clarification, on something I heard you say. So, the city council authorized the city manager to be the land use administrator?
That's right.
Within the vested Within the vested power that we have. So now, the question in front of us is if we just want to take that power back?
Well, the city manager, and you would agree that you would take it back, and it may be, it could be permanent, because you could change the code to make it permanent, or you could decide you don't want to do this after a while.
Okay. So, under our vested right as the City Council, we delegated the authority?
That's right.
And now, under our vested right as a City Council, we are considering taking that back?
With the agreement of the city manager. That's right.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions for Mr. Groot? Nope. All right then. I do have two written requests to speak on this item. The first one is from Mr. Arthur Evans.
Arthur Evans, 6615 Lake Charm Circle, Oviedo. Probably what I'm going to tell you, most of the Council knows, but it helped me to write it down and go over it, and I thought it might be a good idea to go back over it tonight. But great cities are the result of vision and teamwork. There was a time when the City Council of Oviedo did not have this. We then hired Mike Roberto and Charlie Siemens and worked on this for a number of years, several years. Their number-one criticism at the time was that the Council was too involved in the details and too arbitrary in its approach to growth in the City of Oviedo, which caused the process to take too long. They said the criteria should be set by the Council, and the staff should handle the process. If you follow the criteria, your project would be okayed in a timely manner. At this point, I think there became a meeting of the minds, and things began to change for the better in the city. We have a naming of a street after Mike Roberto, who was instrumental in getting this through the city, but to me, it would have a hollow ring if we're not going to follow in naming the street after him, if we're not going to follow the advice that he gave us 10 years or so ago. You want a great city, and we want a great city. It takes teamwork and cooperation. Teams foster ideas and creativity. No single person has all the ideas. This is what is great about working on a team. Economic development and investment have suffered during the downturn. Economic development depends on known quantities, be they financial, regulatory, or time. This is the reason the economic development has been so slow in moving back into the marketplace. The city can help with this, however. There is only so much energy and so much money that people are willing to commit to projects. How much of this is being expended in this endeavor tonight? Let's instead put these resources to use in continuing to build a great city. Let's not go backwards, but instead, we would like to recommit ourselves, West of Eden, Evans Groves, to working as a team with you as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Next, written request I have is from Mr. Walter Carpenter.
Mayor, it's the Council. It's been a long time since I've been out here, but...
Welcome back.
Thank you very much. I'm Walter Carpenter. I'm one of the owners and managing partner for properties owned by West of Eden out here in Oviedo, and have been an owner out here in Oviedo for 35 years. I grew up here in central Florida, and y'all have a wonderful community and one that I've seen go through a lot of wonderful changes and growth. I am here to speak against the resolution and hopefully ask the City Council to delay any action on this tonight, in hopes that maybe where y'all are and where things are relative to this issue is maybe out of perhaps not good enough communication between the parties relative to some of the issues that may have concerns. I did not become aware of this resolution until Wednesday of last week, so I have a lot of concerns that I'd like to understand a little bit more the history of why it's felt that this resolution needs to be adopted and brought forward, and would like to interface in a discussion with the appropriate parties on, you know, how similar types of issues it may have been of concern to the Council are being handled in other municipalities. My full-time occupation is I'm president of Pennell &amp; Carpenter, which is a real estate consulting and appraisal firm in Orlando, and we have a lot of continuing contracts with many of the municipalities here in central Florida. So I've had an opportunity to work both from evaluation and the development and consulting standpoint on multiple town centers and things of that nature around central Florida, to the extent I can offer any assistance where there may be some ability to bridge some better communication. I would like the opportunity to do that. I'm here also in place of, since y'all have also received letters from law firms representing Park Place, I mean, PAX Development, but they have an official name under it, as well as a law firm representing the Evans family, as well as West of Eden. I thought it best for me to get up and address the issue rather than attorneys, and as much as I like and respect attorneys, sometimes that can bring a level of discussion to it that might not be necessary at certain points in time. So, I'm against the resolution, and I would merely ask that the Council delay any action on this resolution tonight to allow, you know, an adequate amount of time for the multiple parties, and there are multiple parties involved, to come together and have a bit better discussions and understanding of what the true issues are. So, I would merely ask for the courtesy of having an adequate amount of time granted. Due to scheduling, things like that, I would certainly believe that a minimum of 30 days would be appropriate, but y'all are the City Council. And I would just merely point out, and I appreciate Mr. Groot's presentation, but the resolution is a carve-out of just a section of your city that would be dealt with on how the City Council would take it. It would not be the City Council on an even-handed basis, you know, allowing the Land Development Code to be administered citywide in the same fashion. You would be doing a carve-out just for the town center, which obviously is a tremendous concern for those people that have property ownership in that area. So, again, thank you. Any questions? I'm open, but I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. That is the end of the written request. What is the pleasure of Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hankin?
I would like to make a motion, but I want to make some comments when the time's appropriate, but to table this to the first meeting in May to give the parties, our staff, and Mr. Evans and Mr. Carpenter, a little bit of time to find out why this is on the agenda tonight. And I'm going to speak, if it's doable, I'd like to speak to just a few things. I can kind of kick-start those meetings, but the first meeting in May, the second meeting in May, whatever is good.
First meeting?
First meeting is fine. First meeting in May?
All right. We have a motion. Let's see if we get a second. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Councilman, you have the floor.
I just want to thank you guys for coming out and for reaching out. I think one of the reasons, you know, and this is something that I think would best be handled if you get with Teresa and Brian, Walter and Arthur, and Dave. I think one of the reasons that this is on here tonight is because of a little bit of the pressure that we're facing from the community. We have this new development. Everybody wants it to turn out good. Arthur, you bring up a great point, that it is a big team, and we have these residents now that are seeing this thing come to fruition, you know, 10 years after they voted for it. And really, what we're just trying to get to is that downtown area, the vision comes through. You know, no one's saying you can't build certain things on certain lots or whatever, but we're trying to, as best we can, to not handcuff anybody in there. You know, I've always said that our code, not that it's flawed, but it needs to be a little clear, and as you know, we are working on it. Probably three months from now, we'll have some of the big things that kind of aggravate us all cleared up, but there was a vision set 10 years ago for that downtown. I think, for the most part, it's there. I'm not sure I would have made the motion at the table if this was folks that didn't have the blood like you guys have in Oviedo, and I've seen through nine years of sitting here, when you guys go to work, it usually does reflect the vision. So I think the most important thing for me is just that, when it's all done, that these, you know, these maps that showed, you know, all these gray things in here kind of look like it is, and I think we're kind of on track. So there might be just a few things. I think the best thing would be for you guys to get with Brian and Teresa and her staff. I think, from talking to Mr. Cobb, I'm sure everybody else has, they know what we're trying to accomplish, and I can just tell you, by no means does anybody up here want to stop it. We're just trying to give the residents what they voted for, and I think we're there. There might be a few areas where we got to work on, but, you know, I think it's all doable. So, if 30 days works for you, Walter, 30 days at first meeting in May should be enough time. You know, I'm sure we'll all be available if you need it, and let's just get there. But that's our concern, and we're just trying to get it to where it is, and it's not one big apartment city, you know, that we get those little things that make Oviedo unique in what they are, so.
That's about it. Councilman Britton, you have the floor?
I think Councilman Hankin reflected a lot of what I think also. I think there's an opportunity here to do a little value analysis on what value-making this change would really bring to us versus letting the city manager act as in that regard, which I happen to trust the city manager to make those decisions. I think he's a lot smarter about this sort of stuff than I am, so if he can bring me recommendations and we can feel comfortable with it, I'd rather let him do the work than me sit up here and try to figure this stuff out. So, what I'd like to do, Brian, is as we go through this process in the next month, can you set up some one-on-ones with us and give us the lay of the land and how this, what this will do for us as a City Council versus leaving it alone, and then we can, you know, and maybe this is a question for Mr. Groot. Do we need to make this motion to come back and vote one way or the other, or can we table it, and if there's no need for it to come back, can we just let it die on the vine?
Well, I mean, you can table it, then it will come back, or you can take no action and nothing happens, and the city manager either brings it back to you or he doesn't.
Proper procedure would be to table it, bring it back in 30 days, make sure it's what we all were looking for, and then we can let it move on.
Okay. I'm fine either way, but I'd like to have a one-on-one with you, Brian, to go over this and get a little bit more clear on it.
Is that all, Councilman? Councilwoman, do you have anything to add?
Sure.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I apologize to everybody. I've got allergies that have just been killing me.
I agree with Councilwoman Britton. I guess I'm a little confused of why we would want to dilute his powers, the city manager's powers, and take that from him. You know, in my opinion, I think that Mr. Cobb is probably the most qualified city manager we ever had to deal with these issues, and he brings everything to us already, so I guess I need to talk to him more. I've talked to him several times on this issue, and I have a couple of concerns about it slowing down the process. We've worked very hard to try to streamline things, and it looks like it would be another step, so that would slow down the process. If there's a problem, I think that we need to fix the problem instead of just, you know, switching the power, you know, to us. I believe the city manager does a great job. I think letting him have that authority or taking that from him, I think, might be perceived badly in the community, that maybe we don't have the faith in him. That we do. I know that you all do, and I do, so I would be very, I would like to caution you on that and be very careful with it. As far as being more involved in the process, I guess that's not what I was thinking. You know, I have no interest in us becoming involved in telling staff what to do or getting involved in the details. I'm very happy with Council setting the vision, handing it over to Mr. Cobb, who will carry out the vision, and so I guess that's it for right now.
Deputy Mayor?
Again, the, Mr. Groot went through a couple of things, no changes to a lot of things. Specifically, it just changes who makes the decision. Is that it? I mean, that's the bottom line. It's just going to make, who's the guy that makes a certain decision in a certain...
The applicant is still entitled to the same process.
All the other things are the same.
The applicant is still entitled to the...
Because a couple of things are said, both out in here, that I'm going to say, I think might be a little bit, we got to clear a couple of things up. Councilman Britton said, if you can bring me recommendations, these are not recommendations that you're going to bring forth. This is, Brian, this is a decision you get to make, correct? It's a unilateral decision that you are allowed to make on certain, certain, not on everything, but on certain things, correct?
Well, let's start with the base unit. What does the Land Development Code say? For development projects within the New Downtown Village Corps and the New Downtown Zoning Districts?
Actually, I'm going to back up just one second. Where is this applicable?
The New Downtown Village Corps...
So it isn't city-wide, because that was something that was said over there before out of the dais, is this carves out something. It's carved out already, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
It is carved specifically out for the New Downtown Corps?
Yes, sir.
Please go ahead.
Does affect the two zoning districts, the New Downtown Village Corps and the New Downtown Zoning Districts. What the Land Development Code says is that development of permissible uses will be through the issuance of a site development order by the land use administrator. That's what it says. So the land use administrator's role with development issues within these two zoning districts is to issue a site development order for development projects. What this memorandum does, and of course, in another part of the Land Development Code, it identifies that the land use administrator is the city manager. What this memorandum of understanding does is it says in these two zoning districts, the City Council will serve as the land use administrator, and so you will take on the role of issuing a site development order. The biggest difference is this. Currently, and I'll use the sign, the Park Place sign on the building, which was a rather large deviation, one that I was very uncomfortable with exercising my authority unilaterally. So I came to you in a work session, and I said, this is my plan, and I would like your consensus, okay? And that's how we're operating now, is that if I come up with an issue that I feel is a policy decision, I bring it before the City Council. I do take care of the mundane, day-to-day things, but if it's a policy decision, I bring it to the Council. What this will do is that instead of bringing it to you in a work session and asking you for consensus, here's my plan, and I would like your consensus, to make sure I'm on the same page, I will bring it to you as a formal resolution for adoption, and I will ask you to adopt whatever the issue is, whether it's a site development order, especially if it's a site development order, and then we will lay it out. The staff will still do the review. We will still make comments. We'll still work everything out. The only difference is, is that I will come and make a formal recommendation to you as to whether, and ask you to take a formal action to adopt.
And some of these may be in a consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
You know, most likely, I said, the mundane. And these larger ones, I'll say, the sign was one that you did bring to us, that, you know, you're working back and forth and having problems, you know. I don't believe it'll add time, in my mind, it's not going to add time to this process. Somebody said that we're taking anything. You put this together, did you, Brian? I'm going to say, I didn't learn about it until Wednesday either, so you put this together with Lonnie, did you not?
I went to Mr. Groot. I brought him the concept, and then I allowed him to take over from there. Mr. Groot, take care of the details.
I'm going to say, it's based on, off a work session. When was this work session we had?
It was, I believe it was in January.
In January.
Yes, sir, and then it was also based on your discussion on March 3.
Right. So we had a January work session, where we discussed how we want the Land Development Code to evolve, to be one unified land... Code to evolve, to be one unified Land Development Code overall, all-encompassing, that basically set thresholds that were uniform throughout. And that discussion talked about this issue, and kind of bringing that into this issue from that work session discussion in January, and then again in March.
Yes, sir.
Right. So, you know, I feel we've talked about it. It does have, it does make a change. I'm going to say that. I won't say it doesn't make a change. I think the amount of having one person having the unilateral position at this point, looking as we move forward, 10 years ago, when the concept was brought forth, six years ago, when we moved forward and we set this all up, et cetera, the idea was to fast, 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 set everything so it can move, 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 as fast as humanly possible by putting one person in charge. In my opinion, and that's all I can say, is in my opinion, and I stated it, I believe, at the work session then, was that part of this is you have one person involved versus a team, versus the people who are charged with carrying out the ideals that were 10 years ago, put in place, and this vision that we keep bringing up again and again and again. And that if there was a sign in council, whether did or didn't like the size of the sign, the sign was going to be larger, et cetera, that's a unilateral decision that one person was able to make versus the council getting a look at. So I think, to me, it's a better idea to have council make these type of decisions. And again, I think that's what the code we discussed about in the work session in January, and again in March, is going to bring forth with the new levels that we're going to put in place. So I'm for this and moving forward with it personally. I don't see a problem with it.
Thank you. Well, you know, the vision is certainly coming together over on Oviedo on the park. I mean, when you take a stroll around there, you know, we were at the ribbon cutting today for Panera. You stroll through it, the brickwork, the amenities in the park, the booklet that Councilman Hankin had is something that Gal from our staff, where are you, Gal? Gal put together, and it'll be up on our website probably in the next few days. That kind of really shows how the park vision, the townhomes, the apartments are all fitting together and working together. Where I have a problem with it is that I think, from all of us not meeting in a collaborative effort, that it's becoming one way on others' vision. That's my issue with it. I've spent 15 years of my life working on this, as the Evans family, more than that. If everybody remembers, when we were at the groundbreaking, I had the original plan from Arthur, what was that, 1983, '86, something like that. So we certainly all have the same goal in mind. But when I look at village court development, I mean, it's right here in front of us, and it says mixed use, yet nothing of mixed use is being talked about. That's where I think this council has an issue. And it could just be a timing issue. It was brought up in this letter, and with all due respect to the attorneys, I found it kind of comical that we'd be interfering with staff if we passed this. How we would be interfering with staff any differently from anything else we do if they're just presenting us a resolution to approve is beyond me. You know, if that's the case, none of us should be here. So, I mean, that's just a moot argument written on a piece of paper. Mr. Cobb is getting put in the middle of this. That's what I really think brought this up. You know, we put pressure on him, as the councilwoman said, because we have faith and trust in him. He tries to convey it, and then all he does is get pushed back. Perfect example is what we approved earlier. We asked for one simple thing, which was just to come into this chamber and show us the architectural renderings before a project was approved, and nobody wanted to do that. So, okay, we cooperated, we'll let it move along. But cooperation, gentlemen, is a two-way street. Nobody likes coming into us because we hold you all to a different standard, and we know that. And trust me, guys, I don't want to go back to the way it was. I was here. I used to sit here until 2:00 in the morning, you know, going over a placement of a fence, one foot in either direction, with some of my former members. I have no interest going there. I just want to get us all back on track. That's all I'm trying, well, that's all we're trying to do. Excuse me. So I think that's what I've been hearing. So if we can work on 30 days, I have no problem with 30 days. We can all just work together, get back on the same page, and just knock this thing out of the park, which we're doing. It's happening. Like I said, when we were over there today, when everybody leaves here this evening, go drive by it. See it all lit up? You know, the streets are all lit up now. The apartment complex, I mean, $1,600, $1,700 a month rent. Who would have ever thought in Oviedo, you would have that type of a luxury apartment unit? And we do now. We have townhomes coming in that are going to be two and three stories, 250 to 350, over there on Oviedo on the park. So it's all coming together. Bungalow-style homes are part of the plan for the, forgive me, I don't know what lot number it is, but it's that odd-shaped one that really has a difficult purpose, but difficult use, excuse me. So we're there. It's just, I think, our comfort level of timing, our comfort level of straying, and, you know, this goes for Mr. Kavanaugh too. He's not here tonight. His representative is here. Numerous representatives, I think. Everybody is a lawyer for Mr. Kavanaugh, raise your hand. You know, I just think that's the issue. That's, I think, what I'm hearing tonight, because we all sort of, kind of said it in a different way. But I have no problem. I think the best thing to do is, as Walter, as you suggested, you know, you'll sit on this for a month, but, you know, you all have to sit and negotiate with them. You know, there's got to be something coming back, something that gives us that comfort level back. That's all we're looking for. And it's not that we don't have a comfort level in Mr. Cobb, it's just that he's being inundated with different projects that we're saying to him, you know, what gives with that? You know, let's change the timing, and Mr. Cobb can't. We could, but he can't. So that's my two cents. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to add? You're good, Steve?
I'm good. Thanks, sir.
Mayor, if I could, just one procedural thing. We did receive two letters, one from April 3rd of 2014 from Allison Turnbull, and then also today, this afternoon, we did receive a letter from Mr. Tom Ball.
Would you like we'd add to them the record?
We provided them on the dais for you, so that you've got them, and they will be put in as part of the record as well.
Barbara has a copy of them, right?
Yes, sir. Barbara does have a copy.
So these will be entered into the record for everybody. All righty.
Did we get those in email, too?
I'm sorry?
Did we get those in email?
Yes, sir, we can forward them.
And I'm sorry, Councilman?
Did we get them already? Are these the same ones I read through the emails?
Okay.
Mr. Cobb, with these, the one was sent out via email. The other one, I think, just came today.
The letter from Mrs. Turnbull was sent out of email. We received the one from Mr. Ball this afternoon. I haven't had a chance to get it out to the council.
So Mr. Britton hasn't gotten that via email yet.
Okay.
None of us have gotten the Baker Hostetler.
No, sir. None of you have gotten that.
You did not get that one, Mr. Britton. Did you have one?
Yeah, I just wanted to just close with a couple things, because I was reading, because we did just get this one, the one from Baker Hostetler. You know, it just kind of aggravates me a little bit, and I just want to say this for the record. I mean, Mr. Cobb has made the most sense here tonight. You know, some people haven't really looked at this, and just getting this stuff all in there, but it really aggravates me. The five of us are ultimately responsible for what goes on in this city. And it also aggravates me that, you know, it's, we're in kind of this weird situation now. And like I said, I wouldn't have made that motion to continue this had it not been for what I consider our family here in Oviedo. I mean, really, but everybody needs to understand, this is a big thing. You have no idea. We got all these big projects coming, and the five of us take the brunt of it. Now, I'm also sensitive in reading this, that you guys have contracts that you may lose right now. And if 30 days is too long, if you go to Mr. Cobb and you can work out, I mean, for me, it's really one issue. The mayor pointed out that when we look at this list, it has a lot of mixed use. We're just trying to take some of the housing out of there and get some mixed use in it. I'm not saying you can't have all housing, like the lot out on Oviedo Boulevard and Mitchell Hammock. I mean, we know you guys are putting a subdivision there. It'll work out. But for me, that's kind of what, we just got to make this more of a mixed-use place. You know, we're going to have the park, that's going to be nice, and we have Paneras now, and Mr. Kavanaugh is working on some things. But, you know, I don't want you guys to get upset, and I don't want to read these nasty grams from lawyers saying that the five of us don't have the right to do it. Yes, we do. The five of us got elected because the citizens asked us to look over them, and we can't just let stuff continue to be built and we don't look at it. Now, Councilman Shank brought up a point, that, you know, he's comfortable with it. I could be comfortable with it, but I also trust that you guys can sit with Brian and take a little of the heat off and say, all right, well, if the council's looking for, you know, some of these lots to have a little bit more mixed use, I mean, if nobody wants to do it, then just tell us. Nobody wants to do it, and this is the best we can do. But all we're trying to do is every event we go to Taste of Oviedo, great day, and we've shown this vision for 10 years, and we're not building it, that looks bad for us. And the citizens ask us, why are you allowing this? So I think we're right there. I think we're 95% on the way for this, the way it's supposed to be. And I think that the folks that came to the podium tonight and Mr. Axel, I think you guys, you've been here with the rest of us, we know what the vision is. We're just trying to, just make sure that we don't build everything just one-sided. If we can just get a few more mixed-use things in there along the way, I think we're good. And Mr. Baker Hostetler's letter said, you know, there's some contracts that you guys may lose. If you guys can work this out with Brian next week, and he has to call a special meeting because you guys are going to lose something, I'll be the first one here. You know, if 30 days is going to cause you guys to lose something, then please tell them, and we're all here. You know, we'll come, we want this to work. But for me, that's the big issue. We're just trying to get a little bit more mixed, and then, you know, we're good to go. We're 95% there. But I think we got to give this some time. We really can't make a point to approve this tonight. But please understand, we have to answer to the ultimate boss, and that's the citizens, and they are hitting us very hard to build what they voted for. So I just wanted to throw that out there. We'll get there. I truly believe we will, we will all get there. This is not hard. We're almost there. Place is looking awesome.
Great. Anything else from anyone? Nope. Motion on the table is to continue this item until the first meeting in May. All favor of the motion? Please signify by saying aye. Aye. Posed? Nay. Motion carries four to one. Councilman Shank was against. Moving along, we have no discussion items, so we do have the City Manager's report. Anything for us tonight, Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. I only have one.
Wait, did I miss something, Councilman Shank?
No, no.
Boy Scouts, good job tonight. Thanks for staying. Great job.
We used to make the Boy Scouts stay till 2:00 with us. Now, Chief, are you laughing because it was true, or are you laughing because you remember those days?
I think so.
Drew was here, Chief was here, Brian was here. Brian had his own pillow. No, Barbara had the pillow.
I was the cause of it all.
Pardon?
I was the cause of it all.
You Brianized everything.
Brianized. That's a good one.
Mr. Cobb, floor is yours.
I only have one item, Mayor. We've had a request, further discussions about Oviedo on the park. We have a request from Mr. Kavanaugh. He would like to have a work session with you. He's been talking to some commercial developers, and they have some requests that would require a change to the Land Development Code. He would like the opportunity to come and speak with you. We've also received a communication from Mr. Harland Hansen, who's working in the old downtown, and would like to have an opportunity to speak with council regarding the designs for County Route 419 between 434 and Oviedo Boulevard. Was going to ask if April 28th would be a possibility for a work session. If not, then possibly sometime in May.
With both? With Harland and Cobb?
Yes, sir. We would cover both in one meeting.
Cool. Although, those are two very important items, so hopefully it's far enough in the future for everybody.
Good for me.
5:30, Brian?
Yes, sir. 5:30.
All righty. Excuse me. Barbara, can you just drop that on Linda, put that on our calendars tomorrow? Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Well, that was quick and easy. All righty, who's up next? Anybody have their agenda open mind closed?
Yeah, I got, I'm up next.
Mr. Groot?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I've got one item I'd like to talk to you all about, and that is the resignation of Melanie Chase Freeman as Special Magistrate.
What a shame that is.
Excuse me?
I said, what a shame that is. She was doing a great job.
That, I think everybody surely recognizes that, but that does leave a void. And I don't know if, the way she was retained wasn't through an RFP or an RFQ or any formal process. Basically, the City Manager asked me to do it because they, we were in a pinch and needed somebody, and I went out and procured her services. Once again, we're sort of in a pinch, and we need a replacement. And Mr. Cobb asked me to explore that necessity, and I have. And there's a person who's an Oviedo resident, and he lives at 405 Evening Sky Drive, which I don't know where that is, but Howard Marcy, he used to be with the county attorney's office years ago. He had his, he did defense work for the county. He used to be Special Magistrate for Maitland as the alternate. He is a, basically, a mediator, Special Magistrate on-call these days. I can give you these, and you can take them home and read. He brought these by today, and...
They're paper. Councilman Shank's allergic to paper.
But I'll give him, he's a highly qualified person, would do a fine job, and, you know, he's just like any other attorney in terms, you know, we work as long as the client wants us to work, and we stop when the client stops, tells us to stop. So now, he, you know, the Special Magistrate's independent of the city, but he does have that municipal experience. So if you want to delegate me authority tonight, you can. If you want to wait and read the materials, you can.
Let me ask a question for you, Lonnie.
Excuse me?
Is everybody comfortable with Mr. Groot taking care of this issue once again for us?
Yes.
Yeah, but I'd like to have the bio on him anyway.
I'll make sure y'all have.
Councilman Britton loves paper.
Okay, well...
It's the NASA, yeah, right?
Should we get an alternate also? You said he was an alternate, and should we also then wish to have someone as alternate?
But y'all have a hearing a month if you do. Sometimes you don't have a hearing, so...
Well, if we add more duties, though, as a...
I'm the Special Magistrate for Seminole County, and I was one of two, and now I am the one of one, because the people don't like to be alternates, quite frankly, but so now I are it.
No problem. I understand. That's okay. Question's asking a question. That's okay.
The good part about it is Ms. Chase did give us at least 30 days' notice. She's going to be here for the April Code Enforcement meeting, and then her resignation will take effect the day after that. So we just need to be able to have someone in place in May.
Sounds good. Council, can we do a resolution of thanks to Ms. Chase for her service?
Yes.
Anybody agree with that?
Yes.
Barbara, if you could put that together, and Linda?
You don't necessarily need to take a vote, because you didn't last time, but if you, if I look, if you have consensus here, then I'll just proceed, and... Mr. Cobb, it's sent in your...
Looks like you have consensus, Lonnie.
Thank you very much.
It's much better if we're just separated from that particular position. I think it's, makes it easier for us.
Yes, sir.
Well, there'll be way too much lobbying. Anything else? Lonnie?
No, sir, thank you very much.
Councilmember Hankin?
Just real quick, I'll save you all something that's all on your reports. We were all at this wonderful grand opening of Panera's, and that's what we're talking about, that new downtown. That's what the folks like. Everybody was out there today and very happy. We got to meet the owner, what was his name again?
Gavin.
Gavin, and just a super guy, thrilled to be here in Oviedo. So Wednesday morning, Chief, you're going to have a big traffic jam out there, you know, but, you know, bring more of that, that's what we need. So that was, that was very nice to see that type of stuff come in. Actually, see some moving vans moving in there, few people moving into those apartments, so it's all coming along. So good job on that. That's all I had, Mayor.
Great. Councilwoman?
Well, I just have to echo what Councilman Hankin said. I'll be there in line Wednesday morning for Panera.
Actually, they have a soft opening tomorrow, so you might be able to.
Oh, I'll go back.
Hit or miss them tomorrow, they said.
Yes. It was great. It was wonderful to see everybody coming out for it. And I also walked on to see the apartments, and it's looking beautiful, and the landscaping, the lighting that they have, it's looking great.
All righty, Councilman Britton?
Our lighting.
No report.